Open it now to the public. Everybody gets one turn at the microphone. Keep your comments to me if you would please, whatever questions you've got. We'll answer them best we can, all right? So who would like to be first? Introduce yourself. When Alden brings you back to ask you questions, you may come back with a microphone, all right?
Aubrey Shepherd. I won't comment on all those wonderful things we just heard. But there was one thing that caused me to get up from my computer and quit multitasking and drive down here in particular about what was said. Underwater detention. A green project, L E E D is great. Maybe I'm seeing solar panel roofs. It could be a green roof, but I don't know what that place is. But underwater detention just failed us this weekend in my neighborhood. The high school runoff from the surface flooded 11th Street, South Duncan and Hill Avenue, and it flooded over the little bridge after only an inch or so of rain that occurred in a herd. It was before dawn, was it? Before dawn Sunday morning, was it? And it looked just, the debris, when I got up and looked out on the street, was exactly the way it used to look when we had a six-inch rain during the time Aspen Ridge was bare of topsoil. It no longer had the topsoil and absorbed water, and it no longer had vegetation to retain the water on that land. So every speck of water, every drop that falls on that, if it goes into a detention, underground detention pond as large as that whole area and will hold six or eight inches of water, it may do its job. But so far, we haven't had one in the city that I've heard of that's surely going to be adequate. Of course, the reason, the problem at the high school, it happened only a week or so before that. They had graded the slope at the bottom of the hill. Some of you saw it if you drive MLK. For some reason, they packed it in and graded it in a new way, and they covered it with some matting, straw or something, and netting that holds that stuff in place. That's supposed to be stabilizing the soil. None of that was evident after the flood. It came off there and probably on several other spots that are unprotected. So what I'm pointing out is that some of these new methods that sound good for infill are not going to be effective in every case, and I would hope this isn't one of them. So, you know, if you've still got a surface somewhere, particularly during construction, tons of silt go in our streams during construction. And I spoke to a guy who was about to begin a project yesterday, who said, "Oh, well, creeks always get muddy when it rains." Well, I said, "Well, you know, it kind of depends on how much uncontrolled erosion there is upstream, what's going on." So I know a lot of people are going to speak on this and maybe on another subject or two after. So I'll shut up. But that is a key thing. It's got to hold an adequate amount. And if you plan for a three-inch rain, you'll hold all that, and it does six inches in 24 hours, then it's terrible. The same morning that that stream had overflowed the bridge, another spot that drains off Pinnacle Prairie, Pinnacle Foods property, that's all black dirt prairie with vegetation, didn't even get out of its face. It didn't, it doesn't run off that fast there. It's got to be a lot of rain there. So we need more natural places that hold back the flooding interruption. So that would be just one thing that could be disputed on this. I think we're about to hear some more. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right.
Michael Lolly, Ward Two, Hill Avenue. I just want to elaborate on just two points for this proposed development, and just based upon direct personal experience of staying in one spot for 29 years. And one has to do with diversity, and the other one has to do with fashion. And so one of the reasons why I adore my neighborhood is because of the diversity in the neighborhood. One of the things that I'm enjoying being here tonight is because of the agenda items, we're getting to see a lot of diversity in our city, and it's one of the reasons why I've chosen Fayetteville over and over again as my home. And so, you know, trained as an architect, I have to resist my Apollonian tendencies for perfection, where I want to make everything the same. And that's probably one of the reasons why I enjoy historic preservation, because it challenges that perfectionist side of me to listen more and control less and hopefully arrive at a richer design. And so I would just, you know, just having traveled, you know, throughout Europe and to a lot of densely populated cities in the United States and kind of where we're growing, a lot of the things that were taken, that we appreciate about those places is the diversity. And a lot of times, that diversity is enhanced when you incorporate a certain density. And so, you know, I support this project because I think it transitions well. I think it introduces a certain diversity that is good for that immediate neighborhood, that will be good for the city of Fayetteville in the long haul, and be good for the University of Arkansas. And so the second point I want to elaborate on has to do with fashion. And I would just argue that this is, this project is totally market-driven. And so when we talk about things like walkability or walk score, or we talk about this younger generation, you know, not the boomers, people like me who in our affinity for the automobile, you have to suspend your judgment and really believe that there is a younger generation out there that just thinks that walking is more cool, that being utterly dependent on the automobile is no longer cool. And so, you know, when we talk about traffic studies and we talk about things like people really parking their car, they have one and they choose to walk, I can tell you from firsthand experience of the 30 apartments that I manage, that the people that have cars that live in those apartments that I look out the window and stare at every day, they sit in the parking lot Monday through Friday. They are rarely moved. Even in the evenings, if they're going to go to Dixon Street, or they're going to go to the farmer's market on the following Saturday, those cars sit in the parking lot. And so, you know, I'm an anomaly among my peers. When I moved to Hill Street 29 years ago, I actually lived on that street for 10 years with no car. Now, I usually don't tell people that because it just casts me as an eccentric. But it's refreshing to me to see a younger generation who has arrived at similar values. And so, again, it's not predicated on the price of gasoline. It's not predicated on save the environment. It really is predicated on free market desire. And along those lines, the university, because of market desire, it is, they are having a hard time because of the market of being able to build housing that students want to live in. You know, 20 years ago, living in a dorm was cool. But these days, students have a completely different expectation of what is cool, what it means to have a car, or walk, or where they want to live. And if they can choose a private development right across the street from the U of A campus versus university housing, they're going to choose private development. And so the university is really asking for the private sector's help in, one, helping them with their growth, but also helping them with the reality that the market has changed and students want to live in private development. And, you know, I take issue honestly with some of the surface, you know, the style. We talk about the style of the development. I would argue that that's market-driven too. When you look at eco-modern flats, it may not be my style, but it's obviously where the market is and where young people want to live and what is considered fashionable and cool. So that's all I'd like to add.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Come on. It's getting a little late, isn't it?
Yes. Um, I was going to say I have, much as I like you so much, I can't always hear you, Jeremy.
Could I get you to introduce yourself?
What?
Would you introduce yourself?
Oh, Rebecca Harrison, 611 Oliver. I just have to say something. I'm not a good speaker, but to sort of honor my husband, who's passed away, and who was a faculty member. We came in '83, and we got to live in a historic house. And every day, because I have a corgi, I walk down Oliver and up Cleveland and down Sunset and back up and around. And so I'm really familiar with it. And I really love the neighborhood. The chancellor's house is there. My friends are there. Schoolchildren are there. Foreign students have been there. And I don't think it's the right kind of infill to suddenly plop 500 units or whatever, 500 parking places or whatever it is right there. I don't think that, I think that's not considering our already established, very lovely neighborhood. And it will be hard for us. It will be hard with the traffic. We've already had Razorback widened. We're going to have Garland widened, and it always sends the traffic onto Oliver. And it's just, it's hard. It's hard to deal with just the density as much as we love it. And so I'm not for this one. I would be happy if it just stayed the way Mr. Bayari had it, and that was good. And I don't care so much what it looks like at this point, although I love architecture, but I just, it's too much density for where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to be next. Remember, introduce yourself when you come up.
I'm Abel Tomlinson from Ward Two, and I'd just like to say something in support of Rebecca. I'm actually a self-employed gardener with Greenheart Gardens, known small business. I worked for Rebecca and Dick Bennett and Martha Sutherland. I was working with Ms. Holcomb right off Cleveland as well, and a few other people. I'd just like to say how much I really love my job. I love going out to these beautiful homes and gardening. It's very peaceful, and I couldn't imagine a better job. And Rebecca's house in particular is one I very much enjoy gardening at. It's just a very peaceful, serene, quiet neighborhood. And I think what people need to understand is like, the quality of the city is partly based on the peacefulness of the neighborhoods. And like, the neighborhood is so peaceful. And she said there's going to be a lot more traffic going through there. That will make it a lot less peaceful, I think. And like she said, she likes to walk her dog up and down the street. That'll make it more difficult. I would just say that, you know, sometimes we need to question ourselves. If growth is always, you know, sometimes growth is good, sometimes it's bad. And if it lowers the quality of life in certain areas, and this is a very historic, beautiful district, there's beautiful homes there, if there's any alternative site, I would highly recommend looking for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Drew Dodson, 1686 West Main. I'm a student. I live over there near the neighborhood you're talking about. I walk back and forth to school every day. I've never had any trouble. As far as like saturation of students, I know I see plenty of vacant rental properties that are just constantly being cycled. I've never really seen a huge shortage of this in my neighborhood. I think this is more like trying to consolidate that market and make a lot more money off of that closer to the university, rather than that money maybe going towards individuals within the community that would make that money. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Ken Gardner, 909 North Hall. I had told Seth after planning commission that I would not oppose this project at the city council level. I do oppose it. I think we have competing values. Do we believe the altruistic concerns of the developer to help the university find housing for their students? Or do we choose to believe this is driven to develop profits for the company in Oregon that's the money behind this? We also have competition with the neighbors wanting to preserve the neighborhood. The current apartment complex probably should never have happened. It's a 40-unit per acre. I think it came in in the 60s or 70s, and it was the only non-RSF4 in that block. Then Theta Tau bought an older home on Cleveland, probably when I was in college. And a few years ago, they were allowed to destroy that home and put their current, uh, current fraternity, I think it is, because I don't think it's mixed, on that property, which led to an RMF, I think, 24. So we've had two properties that have set precedent in the neighborhood. I think if this PZD passes, and Jeremy can show the map that shows the blue, which currently is targeted for high density, I think if this passes, you're going to have a very difficult time keeping other large-scale developments out of that block, and I think it's going to degrade the neighborhood. My wife is motivated to stay in the house if this project comes around. I publicly said that I'm selling and moving. I'm selling the entire seven acres, and I've already engaged conversations with the University of Arkansas about possibly selling to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Bryney. I'm at 760 North Cedarwood, just off of Cleveland Avenue on a dead-end street. I own two of the rental properties on Hall, 816 and 824. And did you receive my letter? Everybody get that letter. I do appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. It's been nine years complaint for me. I have a personal interest because the street has been improved as far as the city's concerned, but I was the loser in the development of that street. The most egregious development improvement on the street was using my properties for flood control. The water pours out of Cleveland, pours out of Hall Street, and the design of the street, according to studies, which I'd like to make a point that studies are fine for a particular special interest, but they oftentimes fail in the real, real world setting. The way that street is planted, it runs all the water down my driveways. And by putting in these structures here on the corner, we're talking about a major increase of flooding. And I know we're talking about drainage, drainage studies, but there was a study done on 816, or on Hall Street earlier to design that street when they put in the sidewalks and took all the side yard parking that we used to have and narrowed my driveways to one car. I mean, that's, that's offensive. And so here we have all this flooding, and I put this out on YouTube and pictures, if you want to see that, and I've put the links. I hope, I don't know how many had an opportunity to look at. But it's horrendous. We're talking about not just a little water, we're talking about a major flood. My renters can't even get out of the car without stepping in six inches of water, just flooding at a rapid pace. Now, this is nine years complaint. To this day, there has not been a resolution, a relief given to me on that street in that area. And now we're talking about putting in another development that will only make that problem even worse. And I would take exception with anyone who says the study or the provisions would be to control flooding. It's not being controlled now, and I've been complaining about it for nine years. That's, that is a serious, a serious matter to bring up because if it's not being addressed now, then how can we trust any studies that are saying we're going to control drainage now? And if I understand correctly earlier, when it was stated by Jeremy, that the current level of water height for drainage is acceptable, it is not acceptable. As the video shows on YouTube that I put out there, that water is jumping the curb. It's not only going down my driveway, but there's so much water, even my driveways cannot handle the flooding, and the water is jumping the curb and pouring into my front yards. This is a major personal concern for me, and it's already reduced my property values and the quality of life for those who live on the properties. I'd also like to address a couple of points that were made just generally. None of the points about the beauty, the community benefit, and so on, addresses the concerns of the neighborhood. While the city at large might, can be argued that they would benefit because not going in their backyard, a major development in their backyard. But here, there's a neighborhood that, when the word integrity was used, we're wanting to preserve the integrity of our, of our neighborhood. And by putting this structure in here with these 500-some beds, the integrity of the neighborhood is severely compromised. The lifestyle of the Fayetteville citizens in that area is decreased. And I agree that diversity is good, but we don't live in Europe. We're living here in Fayetteville, Arkansas, in the United States, and there is a quality of life that we like to maintain, not to be crowded into little narrow streets and crowded little buildings. I think Europe is a horrible model to use, an example to refer to. And I do take exception with people who are not directly impacted in the neighborhood, like I am in particular. With regard to traffic, I would seriously question the statements about traffic not increasing. There's no way. Students, my, my daughter is this generation, she's a student at the University of Arkansas. I guarantee you, those students love their automobiles, and they love to drive it. My daughter's always in her car. And when you look at the university at various times of the day, you notice those parking lots are emptying out and students are taking off. Why? They're going to Walmart. They're going to sports centers. They're going to visit their friends. Those cars are being used, and one of the favorite pathways is Cleveland. And as it was mentioned, it's a steep hill. Now, with regard to issue of safety, that is a real increase of danger on that road. I lived on the corner at 710 Cedarwood. I lived on the corner of Cedarwood and Cleveland, Cedarwood and Cleveland, for 20 years. I just moved a couple doors down. The traffic there, the police officers, I've called the police to come out and monitor the traffic and the speed. Those kids come shooting down there. I had a police officer talking to me in my driveway, and he kept having to look back at all this traffic rushing by him, and he said, "Wow, these guys are really flying down this hill." I said, "It's a, it's a daily occurrence." We're talking about flying down. The police officers, when they set up to catch speeders on Cleveland, they don't have to sit there very long. The very next car, they're, they've got their lights on catching them. They circle around, come back up to, up to Cedarwood or wherever they're sitting, and immediately they're back down. I mean, they, they don't sit there but enough to watch one or two cars go by. We're talking about increasing traffic on Cleveland. We're talking about increasing the danger on that road. And another thing about traffic on Hall Street, when they put those sidewalks in, they took out all the parking because the streets were narrowed. They won't allow parking on the street. They got all these, no parking. That means you've got two-lane traffic in, on Hall Street, and you're going to add 550-some beds at the corner. They're not all going to come down Cleveland or Garland. They're going to be using Hall Street. And talking about safety, when it's icy and cold and slippery on that road, when you come down Hall Street or trying to get out Hall Street, you're stuck because that is not flat. It's all hill. The other thing I would take exception with is the study that says that traffic at Garland and Cleveland is not going to increase. I just can't believe that. I live there. I see it. I see it every morning when I take my, take my grandson to school. I'm heading out that way. The, between the buses, the cars, the students walking, the pedestrian traffic, that is a congested area. There's no way that there's not going to be 550 beds without congestion in Garland to adequately hold it. That's going to be a serious congestion area. I'll make one other point about traffic. University of Virginia, we are in Fayetteville, Arkansas. I don't know where they get their study that 70% of the traffic is reduced. That's just, that's not happening over here. I live in the neighborhood. I see it. I watch it during various times of the day. I see the traffic increase, ebb and flow. I see that another 550 beds is going to be a tremendous increase there. And then as far as pedestrian traffic and usage of that area, right now, we've got a major problem, and the owners of the, of the current apartment complex has been complaining about the smoking over there. I mean, not, not the litter, which is bad enough, but part of that is the traffic that goes back and forth. I don't know if that's been, been studied, but when you, if you're going to build 550 beds and you make that university, college property there, you're going to have an increased traffic flow that essentially stifles and shuts down traffic flow. That's a quality of living shutdown. But the proposals that were made to make it more safe is a stranglehold on the neighborhood. Anyway, I, I really, I really want to make sure that, that the council here takes into consideration these points and really addresses them in their considera, I mean, actually writes it down and makes sure that those points are addressed. But also personally, I have been the loser. The city of Fayetteville has violated me and abused me as a property owner already. This only adds to it, and I would like to see that that's being addressed as well before any decisions made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sarah Eitman. I live at 648 North Gray Avenue. My husband and I live there with our two small children, who are both currently enrolled in Levert Elementary School, and I'm the current PTO president at Levert Elementary. There have been statements made that the school supports this, this project, and those are untrue. The school, as represented by the principal, is remaining neutral, and I want to make sure that that is clear. Mrs. Putnam has been involved in some of the safety aspects and approved the crosswalk elimination and changes, but she and I talked on the phone today, this afternoon, and she asked me to be very clear that the school is remaining neutral as to support or non-support of this, of this project as a whole. I have my own personal concerns. As a parent who walks my children to school regularly and lives in this neighborhood, I have sent a letter about those, specifically the large scale, the density, especially 450 beds, as it compares to 450 cars and the, and the traffic. I've heard from a lot of parents as PTO president and I've heard from a lot of parents as PTO president, and they are also not in support, but I cannot speak as, as for the PTO, I cannot speak for, for the project, but I do have my own personal concerns. I also would like to, to note that the university has announced plans to turn Hots Hall from an office building back into a residential dorm, and that is across the street, exactly across the street from, from Project Cleveland, across Cleveland from that. And so that will add more students, more traffic to that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
My name is Rob Sharp, I live in Ward 1. I came here tonight to talk about the energy code, and so I'm going to stay on that environmental track so I don't confuse anyone. The, just want to say for traffic reduction and VMT reduction, the, seems like as a city, the best thing we can do is to put student housing as close to the university as possible. And so I think this is an environmental issue. I don't think it's greenwashing to say that this is an environmental response, to put the students next to the university so they'll have every incentive to walk and none to drive. The other thing that I think is really important about this project is they've come into doing structured parking and to screen that parking, and that's a huge issue if you go onto most student apartment or any sort of typical apartment places. A lot of times what you see, no matter how attractive the buildings may be or the landscaping, is you're looking at a sea of parking, which has negative environmental consequences, but the most important of which is that people just won't walk past big open parking lots. So they, this is, this project truly is designed to be a walkable neighborhood, and I think the planning staff recognized that, and it was heartening to see the way that the planning staff and the developers and the architects worked together to come up with something that is sensitive to the neighborhood somewhat. I also think environmentally, it's a great idea to take these old apartments that are worn out, that are probably built very cheaply long ago, and probably maybe not perfectly maintained, and replace them with energy-efficient construction. And the other thing is the, I've been doing some research lately on water quality, and the, this is about the surface water, the stormwater runoff, the watershed. And the number-one thing that we can do to increase water quality is to redevelop our existing developed areas. But as the developer mentioned, a more typical approach would be to go out and buy 15 acres and do these apartments, and that would be taking something that was pristine or agricultural or nature, natural and turning it into development. And so this, this is a better approach to redevelop what's already, already in place. The other thing that I've learned in this town from working here for a while is that the University Heights neighborhood is very, very well-defended. There are a lot of people there that care a lot about the town, that are very politically active. And I think that realistically, there's no danger that a project on Cleveland is going to destroy Markham Hill or destroy the peacefulness of that surrounding. And it's the, it's just a mixed blessing to live three blocks away from the flagship of the University of Arkansas. There's a, there's the, it's great to be able to walk to campus and enjoy campus, it's great to be next to campus, but when there's a football game, it's a nightmare. You know, sometimes students get out of hand, but it's, it's a, I think unrealistic now to expect that you can live a peaceful rural bucolic life three blocks away from campus. And so it's, it's just, I think it's, it's always been a mixed blessing and will continue to be so. So, thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Teresa Turk. I live at 1408 West Cleveland, and I am moving down here back to Fayetteville, where I went to graduate school and to undergraduate school from Washington DC. And the reason why I'm moving back here is because of quality of life. I bought the property about a year ago. I'm making a huge investment to restore it back to its historical character, which was built around the turn of the century. These areas are our historical properties, where the founding families of Fayetteville lived, and I am very concerned about Project Cleveland. I'm not sure that I would have purchased the property if I'd known that Project Cleveland was, was in the works. I really would hope that you would respect the integrity of the neighborhood and your consideration. Also, the traffic, I mean, I've only been here about a month, and the traffic right now is actually quite high, and I can't imagine with Hots Hall being converted back to residential, and then also this apartment being built, apartment complex being increased to 450 beds, that we're not going to have an even greater traffic challenge. I would also point out that the gentleman before me talked about the traffic at football games. Well, there's only six football games a year. This will be, with this apartment complex, this will be lots of students every day. They speed, I've already seen it, I've already been hit almost several times with people racing over that hill, and so I think traffic is a serious consideration, given the topography and, and already the, the increased density of that area. So I'm, I just want to also, also mention that the proposal, I mean, it's very incompatible with the neighborhood. That's five stories, that's very high, sure, we have dorms across the street, but this will add even more congestion, more feeling of being in a city, which is what I'm actually trying to escape. I want to come back to this really wonderful small-town life of, of Fayetteville. So please vote against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm David Orr, and I'm here to speak not necessarily against this particular project. I don't feel like I have enough information to really make a judgment on it, but what I will say is that I'm very concerned about what, how, how the term appropriate infill is being interpreted. We've got two massive projects down on the other side of campus. You're well aware of those, and, and infill is great. I'm all for density. I'm all for, and especially if it's trans, if it's true transit-oriented development. From everything I've heard, this is transit-oriented development when, when you want to go where Razorback Transit will go. But most people that are using Razorback Transit are getting on it at their apartment complex and riding to class. If you live across the street from the campus, you don't really have a lot of reason to get on the bus to go to class because you can walk there faster. What, it, it really concerns me that you have, in this project, a gated parking garage that is, already sends up a red flag to me. This is, this is a, a project that masquerades as transit-oriented development. What it's really about is just having a place for kids who are, who have the money to afford to live in a, in a nice upscale development with a gated parking garage on it. Well, guess what? There's a, there's a massive parking garage a block away. Don't we have enough parking garages? These two projects that are already in construction on the other side of campus, massive, massive-scale parking garages, infill is about, should be about more people, not about cramming more cars and stacking them up. What we're doing is we are creating a situation, we are front-loading a future condition where we're going to have a lot of young affluent people, many of them from the upper-scale suburbs of Dallas, you know, that's where a lot, a lot of students are coming from nowadays. And they get out there and they, they got this fancy car, their, or the SUV, or the four-wheel drive, and they want to get out there and drive around and show off, and that's what they do. They don't, you know, when was the last time you saw a bunch of fraternity boys walking down to Dixon Street from their apartment complex? They don't do it. No, let's, I mean, really, what we're talking about here, now, I live on Cedar Street. I live about a third of a mile from this project. I walk up Hall Street. Hall Street, to me, is one of the hidden gems, but I grew up in this neighborhood. Cleveland Street, I, I used to sled down Sunset, to tell you how stupid a kid I was. I used to go sledding down Sunset and sledding down Cleveland, and I narrowly escaped death on numerous occasions. But I think that actually, walking down Cleveland nowadays on a nice dry pavement is almost as dangerous as it was for me to sled down Cleveland. So why would we not be looking at cumulative impacts of building all of these highly-dense parking structures? More beds, fine. More parking spaces, not fine. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Yes?
I'm Raymond Eitman. I live on North Oliver. And I'm very disturbed by this project, of course, because I think it's going to add a great amount of danger to my grandkids. It's already at eight o'clock or three o'clock. It's scary just to go get my grandkids. Please go from Mr. Ungarland at three o'clock and watch the traffic all the way down the street. And to believe that if you add 450 cars to this mix, it's not going to affect that community is pretty naive. To also believe that students walk to class, have you noticed how many motorcycles they have now on campus? They don't walk, they drive. And to, and to believe that when they come out of class around three o'clock or 2:30, they're home, and to believe that they're going to crack the books all evening and stay, stay at home is also extremely naive. Just look at the parking lots behind Hots and behind Cleveland. People move their car, always. They don't, they don't stay in their dorms all the time. The traffic is intense. The last thing I wanted to address is this notion of variety, this misused word of variety. What kind of variety is this? Certainly, the neighborhood, the community would benefit from variety, yes, but we want a stable variety, people who buy on, people who live on, not a transient variety. That doesn't add anything to, to the, to the community. So I urge you not to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Who else?
Hi there, I'm Susan Gardner, and I live at 909 North Hall. We also own the two sections of property that are directly behind Theta Tower that run all the way to Weddington. It's approximately seven acres. We live in a historic home. Actually, we have the, the unusual claim to fame that we've actually owned this house twice. We owned it in the 80s, moved to Florida for 10 years, and came back, and our realtor called us and said, "I know you said if that house ever came back up for sale, you were interested." We drove up here from Fort Smith and bought it on the same day. So I love, love, obviously, as my husband told you, I love my house. I love our neighborhood, I love living near the U of A. I don't have a problem with the 40 apartments that are there. I love the diversity in the students that are there now and the families. What I don't really agree with, with the project that is proposed, is that they keep talking about collegiate housing. They, they've mentioned when it's, you know, in, in some points, they've said it's family-oriented and all of that, but basically, we're talking about dorms. I mean, we're talking about 450 beds, most of them are four-bedroom suites, and they keep talking about, all of the developer keeps talking about, all of these students are just going to walk. Well, then why do we need almost 600 parking places? If they don't need a car, then they don't need a parking place. I just don't think that, that that is being realistic, and they are going to be coming up and down Hall Avenue. I am concerned for the students at Leverett. My daughter is 13, we walk the neighborhood quite a bit, but one of the things, if you look at the plan, it, it is exiting the apartments directly across from Leverett Playground and from one of their parking areas where they do drop off. So I'm very concerned about that. We live on a, on a very small, Hall is a very small street, and we have a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit that we can't get enforced now. I mean, I can't imagine when there's another 450 cars on our street. The, the other thing that y'all keep talking about, and I think some of the other people have talked about it, is that, yes, you're, you're living near the U of A, and some of these things do come with it, but I do think that it's very important to note that the neighbors that are on Hall do not want this development in our neighborhood, period. I think that something needs to be done with these apartments, I just don't agree that this is it. So I would really appreciate it if you would vote against this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Well, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. What's the council's wishes? I assume we're going to be leaving it?
Yes.
All right. Leaving on the first reading?
Yes, please.
Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Now, does the council wish to take a break, or shall we plod on?
No, I'd take a break.
About 10 minutes? Y'all want to take a break? All right, let's take, let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back and again. Let me go ahead and call the, the meeting back to order, everybody. That was a nice time to visit, wasn't it? All right. Number seven, Move to Amend Campaign Support Resolution to support the Move to Amend Campaign by joining with other communities around the country to defend democracy by amending the United States Constitution to ensure only human beings, not corporations, have constitutionally protected free speech rights. I believe Matthew and Mark brought this forward.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We talked a little bit about this at Agenda Session, and I won't make all my points at the beginning, but I did want to talk a little bit to introduce it. I was asked if this was a new thing, and it's not. Fayetteville is joining with more than 100 other cities or county governments that have done the same thing, not to mention state legislatures and other elected officials. We're joining a movement. I was asked, "Why now? Why not two years ago when Citizens United was passed?" And that's the answer, is the movement is now. This is a new movement, and it didn't exist two years ago. I also want to say that, you know, this is not a divisive movement. If you paid, if, if all you did was watch the TV, the news on the TV, you might think that it was, but if you look at the poll numbers, 76% of Americans think that corporate or that campaign donations should be regulated. And what the Citizens, Citizens United decision did was take away those regulations. I think their intention was to deregulate federal donations, but it turns out that also has an effect on state and local elections. That aspect of the decision may be revisited by the courts, but right now, there's nothing stopping businesses or unions or nonprofits from donating unlimited amounts to state and local elections too. So that decision had a direct effect on cities like Fayetteville and states like Arkansas. Just a few weeks ago, on May 21st, Dustin McDaniel, our Attorney General, issued a press release, which I'm handing out now, this is from his website. He joined 23 other attorneys general, Attorney Generals across the nation to submit a brief where they asked that the Citizens United decision be overturned. I want to read a quote he, he said about that brief in this news release. "The Citizens United decision opened the door for corporations and labor unions to secretly spend as much as they want, whenever they want, on political issues. I believe in reasonable contribution limits with transparent reporting requirements so that the people can know who is financing candidates and issues, and the Citizens United case has destroyed those concepts." And he's absolutely right. There's nothing preventing a foreign-owned corporation from contributing to election donations or, or ad spending, and that's true of, again, federal, state, and local elections, so this has an effect on us. Some people... Some people think that resolutions like this are futile, and it's true that it is symbolic. But I take issue with the idea that it's futile. The most liberal editor in the state, Max Brantley, at the Arkansas Times, thought that Dustin McDaniel's effort was futile. And one of the most conservative editors at the Northwest Arkansas Times, Greg Harton, also thinks that this effort is futile. If you boil those points down to their basic parts, what they're saying is, "The best way to solve this problem is through an action." I don't get that. I think that's silly. I don't think the best way to solve a problem is through action. And when a problem like this presents itself, one that is so big that it takes a constitutional amendment to fix, the only way to solve it is through civic actions like these. And that's why I'm asking the City Council to support this resolution and join this movement officially.
Okay, what questions do we have? Mark, you want to add anything?
It's my privilege to co-sponsor this with Matthew. I think he stated our points very clearly.
What questions from the council do we have? Any? Okay. What public comment do we have? Remember, everybody gets one, turn it to the microphone unless an older one brings you back up to ask you questions, okay?
I promise I won't make a habit of getting up three times on three issues at City Council meetings. I'm just really proud to be represented by our Ward Two aldermen and who brought this up this evening. I think this is an important issue, and I definitely don't think it's futile. And in fact, if you'll recall, in December, when Los Angeles passed a similar resolution, unanimously, I forwarded that resolution to you all in hopes that you guys would do exactly this. And so I'm really pleased that you addressed this. And I think that there are instances where cities, municipalities, states have to articulate and exert an opinion on something like this if they feel like national regulation or agency is so out of touch with the reality of Main Street. And I think this is exactly that type of issue. I think that the Supreme Court is out of touch with our reality, small-town America, Main Street. And I think that those types of opinions or decisions have to be reversed from the bottom up. Those are, you can't reverse those types of, that kind of disconnect top-down. And so I'm really proud of Fayetteville. I hope we get to be first again in the state in adopting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Who else?
Hello, I'm Kelly Eubanks. I am the spokesperson for Move to Amend Arkansas. Of course, we're here today to ask that you please support this resolution. Alderman Matthew Petty is introducing. It's been actually a little over 140 cities in the United States have now passed this resolution rejecting corporate personhood, including, you know, Los Angeles and New York City. With the ruling of Citizens United versus the Federal Election Commission, you know, the Supreme Court basically ruled that corporations are people entitled to the same rights, like the right to free speech, as the rest of us. And they use those rights to spend unlimited sums of money on candidates, elections, laws. This is unacceptable. I mean, as individuals, we have one vote. Money is not speech, and it shouldn't be what determines and controls how a democratic process works. In addition to corporations claiming freedom of speech in order to spend unlimited funds on elections, they also use other constitutional rights to increase their power and profits. Corporations claim the Fourth Amendment privacy protections to, you know, prevent health, safety, environmental inspections. They also claim Fifth Amendment rights against self-incrimination and double jeopardy to escape liability where often liability is due. Corporations also utilize the Fourteenth Amendment to equal protection to prevent local communities from creating what they call discriminatory laws that favor local businesses. This specifically affects the Fayetteville community and small businesses that, you know, pay and treat workers better and keep currency circulating in our local economy. Fayetteville takes pride in its local businesses, and this is what the city is known for. Our local economy here depends on the success of our small business owners. So it's really important that local businesses are protected from, you know, corporations who seek to unbalance the power in local economies. If we want to improve our democracy and protect small businesses, one of the most important things we can do is overturn corporate personhood by starting with passing these city and state resolutions, ultimately amending, you know, the National Constitution, you know, stating that only, you know, natural persons deserve constitutional rights. So today, we're just asking you please join other city leaders across our nation to take action to improve our democracy for future generations. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who else?
I think this is a cannot-lose question that you're asked to make a resolution on. I don't think that, well, our voters here are not mostly corporate owners or major shareholders in corporations that want to influence voting and such things. I think that the ordinary person who may, in our city, vote Republican or Democrat in national elections will be hearing something they like, that their vote should count more than it feels like it does when they go to the polls, regardless of which side of the, which of the four, so four or five parties we have going on in our city at election times. So I think that it's safe for you guys who have to run for office to get to speak in this meeting and vote. And it also will be a good thing to express. It may not do any good, but it's one more, it takes one more vote to win sometimes, and I think this city ought to be part of it. So please support this soon resolution, which I haven't read completely, but I know what it's about. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Abel Tomlinson from Ward Two. I'm also a member with Move to Amend, along with Kelly. And if I could, is it okay if I ask some of our supporters to stand?
That'd be fine.
We had a few more, but some of them left. But these ones are the real soldiers, so. Just like to say first off that this isn't about opposing corporations in any way. And if I could quote from a very important book on this subject, Unequal Protection: The Rise of Corporate Dominance and the Theft of Human Rights by Tom Hartman. This, along with a book by the former Attorney General of Massachusetts, Jeff Clements. His book is called Corporations Are Not People. Those are two of the most important books about this subject. And what I've found in being involved in this movement is the public is very uneducated about this, including some of our leaders within the state government and in the university. We went to a state lawmaker meeting and found that almost none of the state lawmakers knew what corporate personhood was. And I went to the law school, and some professors at the law school didn't know what it was. So our educational and media institutions aren't educating people on this subject. And that's part of our purpose, is not just to try to pass this resolution, but to educate the public on how important this issue is. And if I can quote from this book briefly, Tom Hartman says, "Corporations do much good in the world, and in my lifetime, I've started more than a dozen corporations, both for-profit and nonprofit. So it's important to say right up front that I'm not advocating dismantling the modern business corporation. It's a societal and business organizing system that has, in many ways, served us well, and has the potential to do much good in the future. What I'm suggesting, however, is that we should put corporations into the rightful context in place, as they had largely been until 1886. They are not human, even though they are owned and managed by humans. They are an agreement, not a living being." And so the idea is that we're not opposed to corporations, we're opposed to corporations claiming constitutional rights. And the reality is, is that this didn't just start with Citizens United in 2010. This traces all the way back to 1886. Prior to 1886, the Supreme Court decision, the Santa Clara County versus Southern Pacific Railroad, prior to 1886, corporations had personhood in a sense, but it was just a metaphor. It was a metaphor that was only used for making contracts and for corporations to sue and be sued. But after 1886, they started claiming constitutional rights. And if I could, one more quick quote by Justice Hugo Black from 1938. So after the Santa Clara County decision in 1886, and the Fourteenth Amendment was passed, which was originally designed for freed slaves, that's when corporate personhood took on this new, where corporations were claiming constitutional rights. And Hugo Black said, "Of the cases in this court in which the Fourteenth Amendment was applied during its first 50 years after its adoption, less than one-half of 1% invoked it in protection of the Negro race, and more than 50% asked that its benefits be extended to corporations." So almost all of the cases being brought before the courts where they were bringing up the Fourteenth Amendment, it was equal protection for freed slaves, almost all the cases, the majority of the cases, were being applied to corporate personhood and not in terms of black people getting equal rights. And so, like I said, this mostly applies to massive business, too. This doesn't so much apply to small and medium-sized business, because it's primarily only very large businesses that are using corporate personhood to their advantage and to the disadvantage of the public good. Almost no small businesses or medium-sized businesses use corporate personhood. I mean, one of the clearest examples, and this was going on before Citizens United, they were using this right of free speech, a corporate person's right to free speech, to spend money on elections. Before 1886, there was no corporate lobbyists, no paid corporate lobbyists. There was, it was a felony in many states for corporations to spend any money on elections. And since then, now, today, we have 38 paid corporate lobbyists to every member of Congress. We have, I think, let's see here, we have over 20,000 corporate lobbyists in Washington, DC, an army of lobbyists, 38 lobbyists to every member of Congress. And just within the healthcare industry, healthcare sector, we have six healthcare industry lobbyists to every member of Congress. And is it any wonder that, you know, we have arguably the most corrupt and inefficient healthcare system on the planet? We're spending $2.5 trillion on healthcare, and it's estimated that $800 billion of dollars of that is waste to private health insurance corporations that don't exist in other advanced democracies, where they have a national healthcare plan that covers everyone. It's far more efficient. And part of that is because big healthcare lobbyists and healthcare industry is funding the campaigns of our congressmen and our presidents, and they're spending massive sums. And the biggest sums are coming from Wall Street. And we wonder why our Depression-era banking regulations are being dismantled. And we wonder why, when we have these massive bailouts, we don't reinstall the Depression-era regulations. And so I'd just like to say a few more things. I'll try to wrap it up. I know we've been here all night. So, okay. Okay, and so with the Citizens United decision, this just expanded it even further. It just allowed even more corporate free speech. They just opened the floodgates of money. I mean, they were already spending massive sums, now it's unlimited, and they can do it in secret. Many of these super PACs don't have to disclose where the corporate donations are coming from. They can come from overseas, like someone said. And so this is very much, to me, this is the most important issue. It underlies everything else. We're having a difficult time dealing with all of our issues, healthcare, war and peace, energy, environmental issues. All of these issues are so hard to deal with because the elections are being corrupted. I mean, and I don't blame any of the politicians. I mean, they're just doing what the system, how the system operates. I mean, the system requires you almost to promise corporations that you'll do certain things so you can raise more money to win. I mean, 90% of the time, the candidate with more money wins. That kind of brings into question whether we have real democracy. Is it the money or the votes that matters more? It's possible that it's the money. And I'd just like to quote a woman who I think is very wise. Her name's Molly Morgan from Reclaim Democracy, and she said, "The campaign to end corporate personhood is like applying a massive crowbar at the most pivotal point against a stuck door holding back democracy. No more trying the key in the rusted lock, no more poking with a coat hanger here and kicking it a corner there. By focusing on this crucial block, corporate personhood, and applying enough force to pry the door open, the whole concept of what's politically and humanly possible shifts in profound and exciting ways." And so, just to sum it up, I would just, I mean, the idea is that, yes, this is like the Women's Suffrage Movement. To amend the Constitution is not easy, and it's not going to happen from the top. We're not going to have congressmen, you know, automatically doing this. We have to create grassroots efforts, grassroots democracy, and we have to pass many of these city and state resolutions. And then, once we've done that and built enough support, then we amend the National Constitution. And it looks like this movement's taking off. Like she said, actually, 140 cities have passed either initiatives and, or initiatives or resolutions, most of them are resolutions, and there's 60 more cities that are in progress. The two biggest cities in America, LA and New York City, passed them. LA was unanimous. This is a unifying issue. After Citizens United passed, the Supreme Court passed Citizens United, ABC/Washington Post, Washington Post/ABC poll found 85% of Americans opposed Citizens United decision that opened the floodgates of corporate money in the elections. Both conservatives and Democrats, left and right-wing people support this. This is a unifying issue. This is not divisive. So I'd just like to say, please, please consider this, and please, please vote for this. I think it's, to me, it's the most important issue. I mean, I don't, I personally, I care about all the issues, but I like to get to the root of the problem, and I feel like this is the weed, and you have to pull it up by the roots. And please support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
Haven't seen y'all in a long time. I'm a lot healthier, too. So, real quick, before I start reading this, Wisconsin, I just looked it up.
Jim, would you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jim, I assume everybody knows me. Jim Lobler, and I live out in West Fayetteville. Wisconsin, I just looked at it on my smartphone, and the governor was 7 to 1 in funds. I had about five different conservative organizations trying to get me to donate to this thing. And I figured, you know, it's none of my business. This is a Wisconsin issue. So, but right now, it's too close to call. It's an hour after the polls have closed, too close to call. The governor has seven times the money. Grassroots work, you know, and who knows, it may prevail. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read a few things here. First time I've ever done this, I think. And this might sound familiar to you. Here in Fayetteville, oh, one other thing I gotta, I'm surprised that half of this room agrees with the Tea Party. I just can't believe that, you know? I mean, the Tea Party's been yakking this stuff, you know, ever since they were organized. Anecdote. So, anyway, here in Fayetteville, we usually adore the varied collection of voices that gives our community flavor. Often, it's not so much the conclusion everyone worries about as much as it is the quality of the discussion that leads to it. So it is my, it is, so it is, I'm perplexed that elected officials would seek to homogenize Fayetteville in, on the national stage by proposing a resolution staking out a communal opinion for a matter on which there is, to say the least, no consensus. I don't know about the consensus part. So, those guys, those guys have a right to their opinions. Heck, they have a right to bring forward any resolution they want. They think issuing such group of opinions is appropriate, at least in limited circumstance. I disagree, not so much with the issue of today, and I do, in principle, agree with this, what you're talking about here. But with the idea of the city's residents elect aldermen to issue opinions in the name of the citizens of Fayetteville, the process homogenizes the many voices within our community in the interest of advancing the perspective of one segment of the population. What I'm leading up to here is, this is kind of a protest. We have nine members on this council that are constantly saying, you know, "We're the city council. We represent the city of Fayetteville. This is the way we believe." The bus issue would happen, you know? Just take every issue, the school issue. It just goes back and back and back. In principle, the people who sent me here, in principle, were with you on this. And we think grassroots is the way to do it, because that's the way we do it, too. But government, this government has gotten too much into saying what we believe. And I know we get a lot of people here from the university, and the university tends a little left, you know, and there's a different opinion in the different neighborhoods without, within Fayetteville. But we aren't a homogeneous society. So, I'm not saying give up on this. I say you should come and talk to the Tea Party on this. This may be one place where, you know, apples and oranges do mix. But as a council, I'm asking you to withhold this and stop doing this over and over. There's so many things that you've said that don't represent me or the people that have sent me here. And I'm sure this city's probably 50/50 on every issue, just like Wisconsin is. So I'm asking you to start talking about this, and then get out there, take off your badge, turn around, use your grassroots methods, and get the people in it. We don't need governments coming in and doing this. We don't need organizations, international organizations, telling our city government how to do things. We've been doing this here since I lived here. And finally, this year, you know, Mayor, you finally said, "Okay, I see it. I'll..." And finally, this year, you know, mayor, you finally said, okay, I see it, I'll, I'll quit supporting EKLE and Agenda Twenty-One. And we assume that you...
And, and let me clarify something. I made that decision based on budgetary decisions. I'm not saying I don't support EKLE.
Okay. Well, you know, that's the same thing you're talking about right here. Organization, we're talking international people who have no idea what our culture is like, you know? You don't know who's, who's drawing up these plans. You know, look at Greece, you wanna be like Europe? You know, I like to look at the financial world. This council is constantly being influenced by outside agencies. And now, if the council wants to turn around and represent all the people and do a resolution, this has got to stop in this country. Wal-Mart doesn't represent me. All nine of you, you represent me in the, in the fact of doing a normal business of a city, parks, recreation, zoning, and all this other stuff. And I know this is hard to hear by, by probably everybody in this room. But the buck stops here, folks. You ever heard of taxation without representation? How much taxes do you think Wal-Mart pays? And, and no, they don't walk away without paying taxes. So, these corporations pay taxes. These corporations are actually owned by human beings, people who are vested in them. They're, they're run by human beings. Those cars, you know, put, put themselves together. So, you gotta, what's good for the goose is good for the gainer. And I think this is a great place and a good time and a good issue to say, you know, we're gonna do things right, and what's good for the goose is good for the gainer. And we aren't gonna ask people who pay taxes to not say anything. That's, that was, what was the guy's name? Otis in, in Boston back during the revolution, uh, seventeen-seventy-six era. He's the one who said it. It's just, it's just not right. So, and every person that's gotten up here, I haven't heard too much to say about organizations not for profit. It's corporation, 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 corporations. You do this, the way you're doing it, and the gay lobby that wants to support people for office, you're gonna say, you can't give them money anymore.
Mr. Lobler, I, I want you to get yourself a little under control, lady. What did you say?
I got, I got, have dry mouth. You've seen that before, too. The gay lobbies, okay? The organizations that...
Mr. Lobler, I want you to tone that down.
What are you, I'm, I'm talking, and I'm about ready to endorse to these people, these poor people. Okay, let's, let's throw out the gay, because we're, don't mess with my First Amendment now. Let's be nice about this and be fair.
I am, I'm being very respectful.
Okay? Anybody that puts together a group, left, right, center, is not gonna be able to give money as a group to politicians. Have you thought about that? So, this thing is not this simple. We gotta get together as an organization of people, not as governments, not nine people speaking for everybody. We gotta get together as an organization of people, grassroots, and we need to put this thing together bright. And we gotta get it in, back into the courts. The only way we're gonna do it is by doing it right. So, let's not, you know, throw out the baby with the bathwater, and what's good for the goose is good for the gainer. And to me, that's a more, a moral principle. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, who would be next?
I'm Julia Lofton. I am a director of one of the local nonprofits created here in Fayetteville, and me and all the directors I have spoken to absolutely support this resolution. Thank you.
Drew Dodson again, uh, over on the west side of Fayetteville. Been in the Tea Party down in Louisiana. Uh, marched with some Tea Party people in the Occupy Movement. I am an anarchist. I'm a religious fundamentalist Christian, you know, all, all sorts of things in the search of truth. Um, if you go and start doing all this good stuff and stand up for people, uh, we're gonna come to expect it of you, and you're probably gonna piss very powerful moneyed people off. And, um, more power to you if you do it. I really appreciate it. Um, as, as far as like the corporations thing, you know, people have a right to make money. That's not the issue. I think when GE pays mucho billions and gets that, a hundred and fifty percent of that back given to them in every kind of perks, that's the issue. It's not that we're not all on a level playing field. If it was a level playing field, nobody would be here raising a ruckus. I mean, the American people obviously know that we're getting swindled and just cheated out of the very birthright we have to this beautiful country. I mean, this, I love being in Fayetteville. I haven't been here but for a couple years. And like, these guys, how motivated they are, they care, it's freaking awesome. I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm having a good time here. And, uh, thank you for, like, listening to this, and have a nice night.
Okay.
My name is David Druiding, and first of all, I wanna really thank all of you for the enormous amount of time that you take, uh, listening to the citizens and being involved with all the decisions that you have to make. I really do appreciate it. I also really appreciate the, uh, the point that I hadn't actually thought of myself that, uh, Mr. Petty made, which, uh, is really very clear, that, uh, uh, inaction is not an answer to what many of us might think was a mistaken Supreme Court decision. If we think that a decision that was made was a mistake, inaction is not the answer. It's not the way it should be, uh, addressed. Um, allowing unlimited anonymous, even from foreign corporations, uh, financial contributions to be injected into our electoral system in our democracy is wrong. Uh, we, I believe we all have a duty to see that this mistake is corrected, and money is not free speech. Corporations are not people, and I really urge you to pass this, uh, resolution that has been passed by over a hundred and forty, uh, governmental entities throughout the United States. Thank you.
All right. Who else?
I didn't come here prepared to speak. I love this town, and I've grown to love this state. And I've grown to become very concerned about things that are happening. I've grown to be concerned about our water, and I'm concerned about natural gas drilling. I'm concerned about the lack of regulations of natural gas drilling that have not been able to be passed, and, um, new regulations have not been able to be passed in the legislature. And this is an international phenomenon. Climate change is an international phenomenon. It's a world phenomenon. I guess I'm not speaking very clearly. I'm very concerned about it because if unlimited money is able to go into electing people who are more interested in, um, making money than in our environment, this is going to be affecting us to such a dire extent that we have no idea if there will be a world left for our grandchildren. You are our elected representatives. You are the ones who have the rights to speak for us, not the corporations, uh, not the, not the huge amount of money. It's not a hundred and fifty percent, uh, extra that they make on lobbying. It's more like two thousand percent that comes in, or even twenty thousand percent. I can't remember whether it's two thousand or twenty thousand percent. That is, um, uh, the return on lobbying. Please speak for the people. We really have to overturn this terrible, uh, law. Thank you.
Who else?
My name is Fernando Garcia. I live over on Store Avenue. Um, I don't know what the point, or the gentleman, what point was trying to make with Scott Walker. I'm, I'm assuming it was that it doesn't matter if Scott Walker had seven times as much money as, uh, his opponent, and it was too close to call, well, Scott Walker won. Uh, and like you said before, ninety percent of politicians that have more money win the elections. Uh, to me, that's not, uh, democracy. Um, but I also wanted to talk a little bit about freedom of speech that corporations have, and, uh, an incident that happened to me, and I don't wanna be the center of attention, but I'm just saying this because I know this happens to, uh, many, many people across the country. Um, but I was, uh, on public property, um, handing out leaflets in support of workers' rights. Um, and it was, uh, on the university, uh, and a corporation was having their shareholders' meeting. I, I think the corporation's obvious, so I don't have to name it. Um, but I was exercising my freedom of speech as well. I'm paid tuition to the University of Arkansas, uh, and I was exercising my First Amendment right to hand out, uh, information. Um, but I guess the corporations are so powerful now that my freedom of speech was, uh, it was a right to, to, uh, be stepped on. Um, I was asked to leave, uh, with another person who I was, and then after that, we were, uh, harassed by, um, I, I feel that I was harassed by, uh, university police. Um, but for a corporation to have that much power and tell a student of a public, uh, university that they have to leave and that they can't exercise the freedom of, uh, right, uh, freedom of speech right there, I mean, we have a, a big problem in this country. I think corporations are being too powerful. They're more powerful than people, than real people. And I think that's gotta change, and I ask you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Who else? All right, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the couch. Comments?
So, my initial question, I'm gonna first of all thank Matthew and Mark for bringing this forward, and I, I have also received a lot of emails, um, in favor of, of supporting this. And my initial question was answered by your original comments, was what, what is the role of the city? Because I do wanna make sure I'm acting as a council member for the city of Fayetteville on issues like this. And I think, um, that the thing that's, what I came down to after listening and, and is, this is a nonpartisan position, and this issue is a nonpartisan issue. Um, and we're seeing that in the data, we're seeing that in studies, and it, it, um, in public, public surveys. And it's, I think it, it says a lot that, that, um, it's important for us to consider this and make a statement, um, that, that we as elected officials, I don't, I'm not supportive of anyone giving me money to just make a decision. And as an elected official, no matter what level of government I'm in, I don't want to be biased. I don't want anyone that would represent someone to be biased by a financial contribution of any kind. And, um, no matter how, you know, we, a person might try and think that, okay, no, it doesn't bias me, it, the, the mind is a funny thing, and bias can happen very easily. As a scientist, I recognize that, and as a, a public official, I recognize that. You have to be constantly aware of whether or not to recuse yourself, if, if something, if, if something relates to, to, um, your job or your, your profession, and these kinds of things you'd have to constantly be thinking about. And this relates to that in that as a, as a body, we, I think, I'm supportive of this body making a statement that we as elected officials who represent the people of the city of Fayetteville are supportive of maintaining, um, the fact that individuals, um, decide who represents them. And so, I will support this.
Bill?
Yes, mayor, um, I feel, I very strongly support this. In fact, had I been in town, I would have signed on with it. Uh, and signed on with these two gentlemen, and I appreciate so much their bringing it forward. I think it's, um, one of the worst things that's happened to our democracy in a long time. And I feel that it's very important that we do everything we can to get it overturned.
Anybody else? Right.
I kinda have a question for the sponsors. I, I'm still, um, you need to explain to me a little better why, I mean, I very much support, uh, considering, I mean, that the, uh, decision that was made by the Supreme Court is overturned. I mean, I, I certainly agree that, uh, corporations and, and PACs, uh, should not be able to, to basically have no restrictions on political contributions. But the way this is worded in amending the Constitution, now explain to me why we're not just doing a resolution similar to what, uh, the Attorney General Justin McDaniel did and twenty, twenty-two other Attorney Generals did, which was asking the US Supreme Court to reconsider a twenty-ten decision that eliminated federal restrictions on independent political spinning by corporations?
Sure, I can answer that.
Okay.
Okay, so what the Attorney Generals did is they filed an amicus brief. So, that's a friend-of-the-court brief, right? And the case in question is a case that came in Montana, which was a question of whether or not a corporation, in this case, it was a corporation, could, uh, contribute money to a local election without limit. The Montana Supreme Court, the state Supreme Court, said, "No, you cannot. Our state constitution prohibits it." And that has been taken up by the US Supreme Court to decide if that is a crack, so to speak, in the Citizens United ruling. So, that's what Dustin McDaniel is signing on to. He's saying, "You need to answer that question because I need to know how it affects Arkansas." Okay? And that's what all the other Attorney Generals have said. So, he is not calling for a constitutional amendment in that amicus brief. He's asking that they reconsider its effect on state laws and state constitutions. Uh, the reason that this resolution is worded the way it is, is because it's the same text of the resolution that the other cities have passed, number one. And number two, it's because the essence of the Citizens United decision is that because free speech is protected and money is free speech, that corporations should be able to contribute unlimited amounts. That was the logic of the decision. And so, the resolution is to create a constitutional amendment that would prevent corporations from having that, uh, allowance of free speech in our elections. And the only way to reverse a Supreme Court decision is with a constitutional amendment or for a court to come back at a later date, a new court, and to reverse it.
Right.
So, that's why the resolution is worded the way it is.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. I would like to ask, Mr. Lobler, can I ask you one question, please? I wanna, actually, I just wanna ask him a question. I'm, I'm trying to figure out exactly the position, are you speaking for the Tea Party or for yourself? I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I, I'm sorry for any confusion that I have. I was trying to, I, I just wanna ask you exactly...
A, a lot of my friends are Tea Party. I've kinda put that distance. It's not, not only coming here, but going to the Tea Party, if I get away from it, my health is better. So, uh, but this is just one issue. I have to be honest about it. As a matter of fact, I'll probably sign on to it even if it says corporations.
Yeah, I was just, and, and I'm sorry for any confusion I might have had.
No, I'm, I'm not here speaking for, uh, uh, the Tea Party. I'm, I'm sure I, you know, represent a lot of their thoughts in this matter. Yeah, and I think it'd be cool to see a bunch of left-wing and right-wing lunatics coming together and signing this stuff. So, a lot of fun, to see the people do it, see the people, like you said, people take care of yourselves, you know?
All right, thank you. Okay.
Mayor, I know I'm not supposed to speak about some policy matters, but let me say a couple things from the legal point of view. Uh, the Supreme Court's decision was a five-to-four decision, and it reversed, uh, a lot of very old precedent. Now, I know there has been some ground rules, uh, ground cases back into the eighteen-eighties that began to first establish this. But I think it is important for you as the representatives of Fayetteville to look very carefully at this because the Citizens United case basically has, uh, made it very dangerous for our democracy, I believe. Throughout history, uh, the political system has occasionally had... Throughout history, the political system has occasionally had to confront corporate power. Andrew Jackson did it, other presidents, Teddy Roosevelt did that. This particular case, which equated money with speech and with corporations as people, and then basically allowed them to do things privately in unlimited amounts, is very dangerous for our democracy, and it's very dangerous for every elected official. Because any elected official that's willing to stand up against corporate power becomes a potential target of corporate power, the corporations who want to influence elections. Now, a lot of corporations don't. A lot of corporations just want to make money. We're all in favor of that. I own a lot of corporate stock. I want corporations to make money. I'm not opposed to corporations. But they're not people, and they should stay in their realm, the business realm, and not try to take over the electoral realm by the massive amounts of money. And so, I applaud our aldermen for bringing this forward, Matthew and Mark. I think that this is a very worthwhile attempt. I hope it will be successful. It's very difficult to do. But doing nothing is worse. It's better to light a candle in the darkness than to curse, curse the darkness. So I'm in favor of you to try to do something. I think it's appropriate. You're at the grassroots level of democracy, but this affects you just like it does all the way up to Washington, D.C.
So, Mike, I guess I have a question, and I'm not sure who can answer it. Maybe it is, Kelly, can I ask Kelly Eubanks a question?
Sure.
And Matt, and Mark may be able to address it, too. My question is, what's the next step?
Well, the next step is going to the Arkansas State Government, which, as Abel said, back in October, we actually met with the Arkansas State lawmakers at one of their meetings that they held here in Fayetteville. And we spoke to them, just like we did you guys tonight, and we kind of started the ball rolling on educating them on this issue. And, and of course, you know, like y'all, once they understood what the issue was, and they are all, you know, saying, you know, we agree, something, something has to change here. So the next major step is going through the state governments and working with them, you know? And we have a good lead on that with Dustin McDaniel, who's, you know, already kind of starting it on that front there. It's more, and everyone's, everyone's paying more attention to it right now. So, so after state government, then we go to the federal level, so.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah. Okay.
I had some questions, too. I just had to have some things.
Thank you all. Anybody else have any comments?
Only, I do.
Okay, sure.
Are we ready to vote after one week of it being locked on to the agenda? It was locked on last week. I mean, I don't know. There are six of us here, and the hour is late, and I don't want people to have to come back necessarily in two weeks and do all of this again. But I've had one email, one, and that was from someone who talked to me, and I asked her to write her thoughts out. And I'd like to hear from more people. But if you all want to vote tonight, I'm ready to vote. But is, is a, it's a resolution, so we don't, we have to, I would have to move to a table, and I'm not doing that right now. I'm trying to figure out what the pleasure of the...
Sure. Go ahead, Matt.
Well, I appreciate the question. I would prefer to vote on it. When I talked with one of the aldermen last week, I wasn't aware that Justin would be absent, but I talked with Bobby, and he did not ask me to hold it. And as far as public notice, there's been a newspaper article and a newspaper editorial.
Yes.
And so, I think the public has been adequately notified. You know, I think the reason that you haven't heard a lot about it speaks to how not controversial this is.
I'm going to just add that we had quite an audience here earlier that could have stayed.
That's right.
You know, I mean, they were kind of represented, kind of a broad group of citizens of Fayetteville. So, so anyway, yeah, I think that, I think we need to vote on it, so.
Okay, well, everybody's commended except the mayor. I have a sign in my office. It says, "Dare to fake. The only mistake you make is to do nothing." You see, folks, if, if we do nothing, we truly fail. I have another sign in my office. If you come into my office, I have a lot of signs in my office that I look at every day. One of them says, "Intent minus action equals squat." But intent plus action equals will. The will to do something, the will to put yourself out there, to take a stand. See, you can talk about good intentions all day long, but if you don't have anything to back it up, then you're just talking. What we're trying to do here, what I see tonight, is the intent and an action plan, and that's going to take a lot of will, and I see that tonight, that there is the will to do something, to change something, to make it better. So it doesn't matter if you try and you fail, but we got to try something, and it needs to start with us, so. So I was, if I have to vote, I will support the resolution. So.
I'd just like to add one thing about myself. I, I was concerned about voting on a national issue. One came up years ago, and I did not vote on that, even though I had very strong personal support of it. But Kit did kind of open up a way that makes me think, you know, this does pertain to us locally, very much, and to us individually, and to us as the electorate of the city of Fayetteville, or the elected officials of the city of Fayetteville. And so, so I will support this, yes. I just want to explain why. I've kind of changed, changed about, so.
I also think, Mr. Law, you bring up a good point. You can't just work on this national stuff all the time. We need to work on local stuff as well. I think you bring a very good point. I want you to know that as well. All right.
I move we pass the resolution.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Pass the resolution. Any other final comments? I believe we're through, is under which please call the robe.
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay. All right, yeah. Thank you. Okay.
I am proud to be a member of this community.
Okay. Thank, thank.
I think they like it.
Okay, moving along to number eight. Amend chapter? Amit? Folks, I got to do this, thank you all. All right, number eight, amend chapter 117 in ordinance to amend Article Four Taxi Cabs and Article Five Limousine Service of Chapter 117 of the Federal Code to clarify notice requirements cancellation of unused certificates of public convenience and necessity and other provisions. Kit?
Whereas notification of all holders of current and valid certificates of public convenience and necessity should be accomplished by the taxicab applicant as required by pedicab applicants, rather than the city clerk. And whereas a taxicab or a limousine service holder of certificate of public convenience and necessity goes out of business or fails to operate for one year, the certificate should be deemed abandoned and canceled as to do for pedicabs. And whereas other technical changes should be made to the taxicab and limousine service chapters. Now therefore, it be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends Section 117.31 rates of the Fayetteville Code by deleting and Fayetteville City Clerk from the last sentence in B. Section Two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 117.32C by repealing it in its entirety and enacting a new Section 117.32C as shown below. I'm going to grab something else here and make sure I have the most current ordinance that I handed out to you all. Okay, back to Section Two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 117.32C by repealing it in its entirety and enacting a new Section 117.32C as shown below, subsection C, public hearing for certificate. When the police department notifies the city clerk that a proper and adequate application has been filed, the city clerk shall fix a time and place for a public hearing thereon. The city clerk shall thereupon notify the applicant, who shall have the duty to notify all holders of current and valid certificates of public convenience and necessity for taxicabs and pedicabs, and provide proof of service, such service to the city council. Any interested person shall have the right either in person or by representatives of their choosing to be present at all such hearings and to introduce evidence and be heard either in support of or opposition to the issuance of the certificate. Subsection Three, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 117.33 liability insurance by denoting the current wording as A and deleting finance director as the last two words of A and replacing them with city clerk, so that the required insurance policy will be filed in the city clerk's office, and by enacting subsection B as shown below. Subsection B, insurance required under this section must include a cancellation provision in which the insurance company is required to notify the city in writing, not fewer than 30 days before canceling, failing to renew, or making material change to the insurance policy. If the insurance of the holder lapses or is canceled and new insurance is not obtained, the certificate of public convenience and necessity shall be suspended until insurance coverage required under this section has been obtained. A person shall not operate a taxicab service while the certificate is suspended under this section. Section Four, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 117.34 licensing requirements by repealing subsection B surety bond required and enacting a new subsection B notification of change of address required as shown below. Subsection B, notification of change of address required. Every holder of a certificate of public convenience and necessity for taxicabs and pedicabs shall ensure the city clerk's office is promptly notified of any change of its business address. Failure to comply with this notification requirement is not only grounds for revocation or suspension, but also waives any expectation of notification by another applicant for a certificate pursuant to subsection, to Section 117.32 subsection C. Section Five, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 117.36 by amending the title to suspension, revocation, and cancellation of certificate and enacting a new subsection C as shown below. Subsection C, if any holder of certificate goes out of business, fails to operate under certificate for one calendar year, fails to have any vehicle inspected to operate under certificate for one calendar year, or fails to have any driver or operator properly permitted on this certificate for one year, the holder's certificate of public convenience and necessity shall be deemed abandoned and shall be denoted as canceled and vowed by the city clerk. Subsection Six, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 117.63 liability insurance of the limousine service chapter by replacing financing director with city clerk in the current language and denoting this as subsection A and enacting a new subsection B as shown below. Subsection B, insurance required under this section must include a cancellation provision in which the insurance company is required to notify the city in writing, not fewer than 30 days before canceling, failing to renew, or making a material change to the insurance policy. If the insurance of the holder lapses or is canceled and new insurance is not obtained, the certificate of public convenience and necessity shall be suspended until insurance coverage, insurance coverage required for this section has been obtained. A person shall not operate a limousine service while the certificate is suspended under this section. And finally, Section Seven, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby enact Section 117.65 suspension, revocation, and cancellation of certificate as shown below. Subsection 117.65, a limousine services certificate of public convenience and necessity may be suspended, revoked, or canceled for the same reasons and by the same procedures set forth in Section 117.36. Mr. Mayor, we brought this forward, the city clerk, myself, and the police department. We had noticed there were some inconsistencies between the requirements we had for the pedicabs, which had made, we had made more up to date recently, and so we thought that we needed to have these changes, which are mainly housekeeping changes, replacing the financing director as the holder of certificates, making it now everything going to the clerk as it should be. And so, we took this to the Orders of View Committee meeting, and Alderman Boudreaux was there, and Alderman Tennant, and they made some suggested changes, which we have incorporated in there.
Okay. What questions we have in the council on this? Do we have any public comments on this? Okay. Well...
Maybe if we got the suspend rose, go to the third and final round.
We're all still, we're all still waiting. All right, we have a motion to second to go to the second round. Sonder, would you please call the robe?
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray? Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
In ordinance to amend Article Four Taxi Cabs and Article Five Limousine Service of Chapter 117 of the Fayetteville Code to clarify notice requirements cancellation of unused certificates of public convenience and necessity and other provisions.
Suspend the rose, go to the third and final round.
We have a motion to second to go to the third and final round. Sonder, would you please call the robe?
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray? Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
In ordinance to amend Article Four Taxi Cabs and Article Five Limousine Service of Chapter 117 of the Fayetteville Code to clarify notice requirements cancellation of unused certificates of public convenience and necessity and other provisions.
Well, do we have any final comments, Ms. Stern?
I appreciate the hard work of the city attorney and the city clerk and the police that worked on helping us get this where it needs to be.
Thanks. There's no other comments. Sonder, would you please call the robe?
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray? Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay, number nine. Enact 39.10 water and wastewater damage claims in ordinance to enact 39.10 water and wastewater damage claims into the Fayetteville Code. Kit?
Here I go again. Whereas occasionally a city water main gets blocked, causing sewer, sewage to back into a residence, or a city water main breaks and causes some damage to nearby property. And whereas sovereign immunity protects the city from liability for such damages, even if our employees might have somehow acted negligently, which is usually not the case. And whereas the city has long suffered some limited, has long offered some limited compensation for property damage and cleanup costs to affected persons on a case-by-case basis. And whereas the procedure for how to house such claims with limits on the type of compensation and the amount of compensation clearly expressed should be enacted into the Fayetteville Code to ensure consistent and fair treatment of such conditions. Now therefore, it being ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby enact Section 39.10 water and wastewater damage claims to the Fayetteville Code as shown on Exhibit A. And Section Two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeals any and all previous resolutions and ordinances concerning such damage claims. And I worked with David Jurgens, Utilities Director, about this. As I pointed out in the agenda session, we had a couple, a couple resolutions that went back as far as 25 years and earlier that set damage amounts that no longer were adequate to be able to help clean up property if it had gotten flooded because of our problems. There were also not very clear procedures on how to go forward, and I think that we resolved that. We had a meeting with not only David, but with many department heads throughout the city, and Don participated in that, too, to try to make sure we covered a proper procedure for all the possible damage claims made against the city, and this is what we came up with. And I don't know if David wants to add anything. I know you've enjoyed this meeting, David. Just available to answer questions.
We have anything for David on this? Okay. Do we have any public comments on this? Okay. And so?
Do you have a question?
Yes. Wait a minute. Sarah has a question.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, I'm ready to go.
Is that what you said?
We're going to second that. We second that question. Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, what, and what is the process for, so, for example, if there is a backup, there's not, how is it determined whether or not that there will be activity, you know, will be assistance or participation? or participation with the city?
Well, we're basically using most of the same process for investigating these claims as we've always used. So I'm going to turn to David Jurgens, who has been looking at these claims forever.
We respond to any call from a customer when there's a sewer problem. And we evaluate whether the problem is on the main or is on the private service line. And that's our first response, to check the main and see if it's clear. That usually answers the basic question right now. Although the crew does not have the authority to say, yes, we will pay a claim or not. But they can usually tell, probably 95% of the time on sewer backup like that, if the main is blocked. If the main's not blocked, it's a customer's problem because it's on a private service line. So it's relatively straightforward evaluation at that time. We do get some weird ones where the main is blocked, but their service line is blocked as well. It becomes more difficult. When they determine that, then if they believe that the backup is caused by the city main and the customer has enough damage that they want to have an immediate cleanup requested, then we call in a supervisor. Typically, either the supervisor or the sewer crews, so he's running about 18 folks, or the assistant manager, the manager of the division go. And then they make a determination on sight of whether we should call in an immediate emergency cleanup-type repair response.
Does that answer your question?
Well, it doesn't, actually.
Okay.
I would like that there is some human decision in there, and it's not prescriptive.
Every case is evaluated by a very specific on sight.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Are you going to move to... Yes, Ron.
So I don't know if this is what you're saying, but this is what I was trying to ask in an agenda session. I think we can do, okay, we can do as a city as little as possible, or we can, which I don't think you're trying to do here.
We'd probably do nothing. We are protected by sovereign immunity, but it has not been the policy of Fayetteville for the last 35, 40 years to do nothing.
And I hear in this, and I hope this is right, that you are injecting some human, like some layers where the mayor can go even further. And so there's this kind of what you can do legally or what you don't have to do legally, and what you should do to make things right. And I think what I hear this does, is does try to move on to make things right with people, even though we don't have to, and we should. And I'm glad to hear that human, I don't know if that's what...
And to also clarify what damages we will pay and what we will not pay. So we will not pay damages that are covered by insurance. We'll not pay an insurance company.
Okay, good.
We will not pay for personal injuries and pain and suffering and things like that, because that would be dramatically high.
Yes.
But we will pay for their actual kind of out-of-pocket losses.
I appreciate that. That's what I was kind of trying to say. I feel like I hear you putting the human into this.
We've always tried to follow the do-right rule. If our system causes a failure, we try to do right because the customer did not have the ability to control it.
At the same time, I might add that we also have a responsibility to not pay claims that are not the responsibility of all of the citizens, because that also impacts the city budget and their financial.
Thank you. I appreciate that, too.
Okay.
I move we accept this.
Suspend the rolls and go to the second reading. Oh, we need public comments.
I'll second that.
Did we ask for public comment? Okay, thank you. Now, we're about to move to the second reading, correct?
We go to the second reading.
And we have a second to the second. Yes. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreau?
Yes.
Kenyon? Yes.
In ordinance to enact Section 39.10 Water and Wastewater Damage Claims into the Fayetteville Code.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to go to the third final reading. It's multiple motions in seconds. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreau?
Yes. Kenyon? Yes.
In ordinance to enact Section 39.10 Water and Wastewater Damage Claims into the Fayetteville Code.
Is there any final comments on this? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreau?
Yes.
Kenyon? Yes.
Okay, number 10. Enact 39.11 Damage Claims Other Than Water and Wastewater Damage Claims. In ordinance to enact 39.11 Damage Claims Other Than Water and Wastewater Damage Claims into the Fayetteville Code. Kit?
Whereas occasionally, an uninsured city vehicle or piece of equipment causes property damage to a citizen's structure or vehicle such that it would be appropriate to pay to repair such structure or vehicle, even though Fayetteville sovereign immunity protects us from liability for damages even if caused by our negligence. And whereas it is proper to enact a policy explaining the procedure and limitations of such compensation. And therefore, it be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby enact Section 39.11 Damage Claims Other Than Water and Wastewater Damage Claims into the Fayetteville Code as shown on Exhibit A. Section 2, the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeals any and all previous resolutions and ordinances concerning such damage claims. I really felt like there were two kinds of damage claims that we faced. Most of them have been water and wastewater. I'm not pointing a finger at you for any problems like that. But sewers back up more often than we run into people. But, and this does not cover any insured vehicle. We are required by the statutes to have our insurance up to the minimum state level, and we do that through the municipal league. And so this specifically excludes that. They handle all the claims for any insured licensed vehicle that we have. But then we have other vehicles that can cause damage, and we have other times where damage can be caused other than in water and sewer, slightly different types of damage. And that's why I had, I recommended that we had a separate provision for them. But the same amount of damages and the same exclusions on personal injury and pain and suffering.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the council on this?
I have one.
A little pain and suffering, sort of like the meeting tonight.
The intent is really to remove some of those old, basically, resolutions for specific events.
Well, they are repealed under this.
Based on, under this, right.
This is the new one, and this is now going to be in the code. The other ones were never in our code, which is a mistake, too, because people couldn't find how to do it. These are going to be put in the code, so it'll be clear to everybody what's covered, what's not covered, how to do it.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this? Yes.
Could we, again, I do have a question on this, which is, who is actually the one who decides whether a particular claim is going to be covered or not covered?
You're looking at, initially, it will be, on this one, will be Don Mar, the Chief of Staff. The other one was our utilities director, because he's been doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, the buck can go farther.
Yes.
If the mayor, if it's a large claim that the mayor believes is worthy of more than $8,000, then the city council's brought into the...
Then I bring it to the council.
They get to decide.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I need a motion to go to the second reading.
Somebody?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreau?
Yes.
Kenyon? Yes.
In ordinance to enact Section 39.11 Damage Claims Other Than Water and Wastewater Damage Claims into the Fayetteville Code.
Sandy Rosen got the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to go to the third and final reading.